Good afternoon. We have a quorum. I call to order the special meeting of the Finance Committee. We have two more sessions and the last session will end at six fifty. The special meetings of the Finance Committee are to scrutinize the estimates of the twenty twenty five, twenty sixteen, twenty six financial year of the government to make sure the funding won't be exceeding those that are needed. I also remind members that your questions must be related to the estimates. When you ask questions, please quote the reply number. And if members cannot follow up on the written responses today, you may raise supplementary questions and submit them to the Secretariat before seven P M. tonight. I will now invite the Secretary for Health to give his opening remarks, and I will also ask members to press the Request to Speak button. Secretary, please. Excuse me, please calm down, calm down, listen to the secretary.
In twenty twenty five, twenty sixty, estimated recurrent expenditure on healthcare is one hundred and fifteen point three billion dollars, accounting for nineteen point six percent of the recurrent government expenditure. An increase of five point six percent compared with the revised recurrent expenditure in twenty twenty four to twenty five. The government is conducting a comprehensive review on the positioning and objectives of the healthcare system, reforming the functions and division of work among the Hospital Authority H A, the Department of Health D H, and the Primary Healthcare Commission P H C C, enhancing the work of the D H and P H C C on health promotion and disease prevention, as well as strengthening the role of the D H as the regulatory authority. In tandem with the deepening of the healthcare system reform, the government will adjust the financial provisions for expenses and different aspects of healthcare to ensure the proper use of resources. The government provides funding to the H A to meet projected demand growth based on the triennial funding arrangement. Having regard to population growth rates and demographic changes, in twenty twenty five, twenty six, a recurrent subvention of ninety nine billion dollars will be provided to the H A, representing an increase of about three point seven percent as compared with the twenty twenty four, twenty five revised estimate ninety five point four billion dollars. Key initiatives undertaken by the H A include implementing the reform on governance and management to enhance the quality, safety, and efficiency of public medical services and facilities. Implementing the fees and charges reform for public healthcare to guide the public to make optimal use of healthcare resources, reduce wastage and abuse, and enhance the healthcare protection for poor, acute, serious, critical patients, thereby strengthening the sustainability of the healthcare system. Enhancing the capacity and quality of public healthcare services. Measures include providing around three hundred and thirty additional hospital beds, increasing the capacity for operating theater services, endoscopic services, and catheter surgeries, strengthening clinical services, shortening the waiting time of specialist outpatient clinics, as well as integrating pediatric services at the Hong Kong Children's Hospital, et cetera. And strengthening centralized procurement of drugs and medical devices to enhance cost effectiveness and taking forward smart hospital initiatives to enhance service quality, safety, and efficiency. The D H will enhance health promotion and disease prevention, including formulating a life course approach health promotion strategy, strengthening the whole school health program, optimizing various fascination subsidy schemes, and making use of the additional time limited provision of about two hundred and seventy five million dollars for the expenses under the elderly healthcare voucher scheme, E H V S. To enhance the standard and efficiency of public and private healthcare services, the government will establish a professional platform to formulate clinical protocols and quality indicators and explore legislating for private healthcare price transparency. The government will endeavor to promote new quality productive forces in biomedical technology and develop Hong Kong into an international health and medical innovation hub with the widening of the applicability of the One Plus mechanism to all new drugs on first of November twenty twenty four. The D H introduced consultation service for new drug applications since last month and will put forward a timetable for establishing the Hong Kong Centre for Medical Products Regulation and the roadmap towards adoption of primary evaluation in the first half of this year. The government established the G B A International Clinical Trial Institute, G B A R C T I in the He Tao Corporation Zone to provide one star clinical trial support platform. Under one stone, two parks and one institute, one center, the G B A R C T I will collaborate with the G B A International Clinical Trial Center to establish a collaboration platform. The I C T I will also establish the Real World Study and Application Center to accelerate the approval of new drugs. The government has been enhancing the training of healthcare professionals and suitably increased number of places in government funded undergraduate programs. The annual number of U G C funded medical training places has increased from three hundred and twenty in two thousand and nine to two thousand and ten to six hundred and fifty in twenty twenty five, twenty six, which has more than doubled. The government will continue to actively admit non locally trained healthcare professionals, including doctors, dentists, and nurses. The government introduced the Supplementary Medical Professions Amendment Bill twenty twenty five into the L E C K O last month, creating new pathways to admit non locally trained supplementary medical professionals to work in public healthcare institutions. On the third medical school, the government has announced in the budget that resources would be set aside to support universities in the development of the new medical school. The task group on new medical school has received a total of three proposals and is expected to complete the evaluation and recommend to the government within this year, a proposal. Primary healthcare. The government is implementing various recommendations in the primary healthcare blueprint, amidst which the chronic disease co-care pilot scheme has introduced a dedicated nurse clinic service and expanded the scope of screening to achieve full coverage of the three highs. The scheme has been expanded to the designated general outpatient clinics in phases as well. We are pleased to note that the number of participants in the scheme has exceeded one hundred thousand. The government will continue to develop D H C's network and its multidisciplinary primary healthcare services, including upgrading the three D H C expresses in the central and western district, Yau Tiam Mong and eastern districts. Also, in Q four of this year, we will complete the development of the community drug formulary and launch a community pharmacy program in phases starting from Q four of next year. For the elderly healthcare voucher E H C V G B A pilot scheme, the government launched the scheme in twenty twenty four and the coverage has been extended to seven integrated medical or dental institutions in four mainland cities in the G B A. As at February twenty twenty five, there were over eleven thousand elderly persons who had used E H C Vs at the relevant service points, involving a total amount of about twenty seven point three million Hong Kong dollars. The Health Bureau is preparing for the extension of the pilot scheme to achieve full coverage in the G B A this year. On development of Chinese medicine, we are committed to promoting the high quality, high standard, and all round development of Chinese medicine in Hong Kong to develop Hong Kong into a bridgehead for the internationalization of Chinese medicine. The year of twenty twenty five will be notable as the first Chinese medicine development briefing will be released at the end of this year, and the two flagship institutions, the Chinese Medicine Hospital and the premises, permanent premises of the government Chinese medicines testing institute will commence services from the end of this year. The smoking prevalence of Hong Kong dropped from ten point two percent in twenty nineteen and nine point five percent in twenty twenty one to nine point one percent in twenty twenty three. To tick forward the tobacco control process, the government introduced in June twenty twenty four the new tobacco control strategy to minimize social hazards posed by tobacco products. To implement these measures, the Health Bureau will soon submit the Tobacco Control Legislation Amendment Bill to the L E C K O. On oral health, the amended provisions of the Dentist Registration Amendment Bill twenty twenty four were gradually implemented this year. The first batch of non locally trained dentists started to work under the D H in the first quarter of this year, alleviating the manpower shortage of dentists in Hong Kong. The government will continue to increase the number of training places for dental hygienists and dental therapists. The government will actively develop prevention oriented primary oral healthcare and focus the provision of appropriate oral health and dental care services for underprivileged groups. The, in March, the government implemented the primary dental co-care pilot scheme for adolescents and will introduce new measures such as the Community Dental Support Program and preventive dental care service for preschool children within this year. On development of E Health Plus, the government will continue to implement the five year plan of E Health Plus to transform E Health into a comprehensive healthcare information infrastructure to provide citizens with more coherent and high quality healthcare services. The government has submitted the Electronic Health Record Sharing System Amendment Bill twenty twenty five to the L E C K O to tie in with the development of E Health Plus. Chairman, the above is my key introduction. My colleagues and I are happy to answer questions from members.
Thank you, Professor Lo. Now twenty three members are waiting to speak. Let's do four minutes per member. We can come, come, cover up to the number twentieth or twenty first member now. The lineup, Mister Bu Tang, Mister Chankin Po, Mister Kingsley Wong, Mister Champula, Mister Edward Lo. Professor Chairman Kong, Mister Michael Ting, Doctor Tan Yeh Hung, Mister Chen Hui Yan, Mister Kitson Ya, Mister Joe Fei Yan, Chen, Doctor Tik Chi Yu, Mister Edmund Wong, Mister Yunus Young, Mister Liang Kwok, Mister Ma Feng Kwok, Reverend Peter Kun, Mister Kenneth Thork, Doctor So Chuen Wing. The twentieth is Doctor David Lam, the twenty first, Doctor Dennis Lam. Twenty second, Mister Jesse Sha, and twenty third, Mrs. Regina Ip. Now, it will depend on whether we can get through all the members before you do tell whether we can come to you. Mister Bu Tang, I will be brief. So, one, six, nine, one seventeen, and one seven, one, all of them about primary healthcare. Now, let's start with one, six, nine. Now, in the contract was awarded for women's health. It's the Women Wellness Satellite. Now, the blueprint says that the women's health centers and the elderly health, health centers will be consolidated. So, does it mean that three years from now, after the contract expires, all those centers will be gone? Now, on the cross boundary use of the health, healthcare vouchers, some of them were used in Guangdong. Have we seen complaints from the usage? If so, what were those complaints about? We support community pharmacies to give people easier access to drugs, but why is it taking so long? At the end of last year, we started the market consultation, and we have to wait till the fourth quarter next year before we can see a phased implementation. That's taking way too long. Can we move faster? Are we being too stringent with our conditions? So, three questions. I will invite the Commissioner for Primary Healthcare. Actually, the third question is also related to primary healthcare. Now, just a few words on the community pharmacy. It's not a straightforward matter. We have to assure the quality of the future community pharmacies. We need the hardware such as the computer systems in place. We have to fix that. We also need training. So, that's a brief reply to the question. Now, over to Doctor Peng Fei Chow, who will also take this question. Now, on the use of the healthcare vouchers in the G B A, Doctor Ronald Lam from the Department of Health will take that question. Now, over to Doctor Peng Fei Chow. Now, we issued, we invited tender, and then the women's health centers under the D H will be moved to the Primary Healthcare Commission. Now, those women's health centers will be renamed as Women Wellness Satellites, and they will commence operation in the second and third quarters this year. In June this year, we will make the details public. By then, we will announce the detailed arrangement. Now, over to Doctor Ronald Lam. As at the end of last year, now on the pilot scheme involving seniors healthcare vouchers, seven institution insurance took part in the scheme. More than fifteen thousand transactions involving an amount of twenty million dollars. We thank the Guangdong Provincial Health Commission because we have a mechanism. Whenever we get an inquiry or complaint, we have a protocol to deal with that. A hotline is in place in Hong Kong for users to make inquiries or file complaints. As at the beginning of this year, we had received only three complaints. Then we investigated the case, the cases, and it turned out to be misunderstanding. Some thought the fees were not transparent enough, but we visited the site and found that the fee schedules were put on display. So, the pilot scheme is working well. On community pharmacies, Doctor Chan Wei Lung, the Director of Strategic Purchasing Office, will take the question. Community pharmacies mark a vital breakthrough, but we have to overcome certain hurdles. First, drug supply. We need drug makers to setting the standards. The industry will have to meet our standards. Preparations will be needed. The third point is the cyber systems. We need a computerized system across the board before the system can work. Mister Chankin Po. Number twenty five. It's the voluntary health insurance scheme. Now, more than one point four million policies by twenty twenty four. There's a concept as a high risk pool. The thinking went like this. Someone with existing conditions had to pay an extra twenty percent in premium or double. But it turned out to cost too much, even if people were to pay double. So, can we consider alternative high risk pools such as making people pay higher premiums? Or the government can pay less, so people with existing conditions will also have an option. Now, they're simply barred from taking out such insurance. Now, two oh four. It's the elderly healthcare vouchers and the usage in Hong Kong and the mainland. So, we have to approach this with caution. Now, there's a page with the amounts involved. So, we can see amounts like nineteen million dollars and fifteen million dollars. So, C K J will incur a larger amount than Hong Kong used Shenzhen Hospital. So, maybe those clinics are very popular. People go to the mainland for complicated oral surgeries. So, I wonder why this is the case? Why such huge amounts? Secretary. On the V H I S, now starting from April twenty nineteen, it has been six years since. There were three intervening years of Covid. Now, there are more than one point four million such policies. But because of Covid, the time spent we're looking at is rather limited. We're looking at the market response. We're gathering market statistics. When appropriate, we will review the scheme, and we are also hearing from all sides. As Mister Chankin Po said, he raised some points, and we are considering those points, but we have to base our work on enough data for the review. Now, on the healthcare vouchers. C K J's clinics are very different from Hong Kong used Shenzhen Hospital. Now, C K J focuses on dental services, whereas Hong Kong used Shenzhen Hospital offers a wide range of healthcare services. There's a distinction. And when you go to a dental clinic for dental care, the average fee is much higher. Now, please carry on, Secretary. Location is another factor. There's a new specialist dental clinic, and there's keen demand for dental services from Hong Kong. So, when a new clinic opens up, as in the case of C K J, you will see the amount surging with C K J, approximating that the level of Hong Kong used Shenzhen Hospital, and this is a choice made by people. Next, Mister Kingsley Wong. One, four, oh, and one, eight, five. Now, we have just touched on the healthcare voucher. It's a pilot scheme. Are we going to do a policy review? We know this scheme is popular. And by using such vouchers, how much are we saving? Now, people say in the mainland, healthcare is affordable and so the service is great. Have we assessed the situation to see the results of this scheme? Can we expand cross boundary healthcare collaboration? One, eight, five. It's about manpower. Midwives manpower. Four thousand people, but let's look at our manpower projection by twenty thirty. We will have too many midwives, a surplus of a thousand midwives. That would mean people graduating with that qualification will not get a job. So, can we reduce the training places for midwives given that? Professor Lu Chong Mao. Now, on healthcare vouchers, we review the situation regularly. We also look at complaints, service quality. After expanding the scheme, we will carry on the review. There was a question about complaints, and we've said that the complaint figures are on the low side. Now, on reviewing the savings from this scheme, by healthcare vouchers, the government is providing a kind of medical benefits for people. People get two thousand five hundred dollars plus five hundred dollars per year. That money is in people's accounts. People get to choose whether to spend the money in Hong Kong or in the mainland. People can choose the particular medical institution they're using. So, this is up to each individual. We're not saving money through the healthcare vouchers. That money has gone to our seniors for them to make a choice. So, we cannot say how much we're saving in our public healthcare system. My question is, we give the money to seniors. I'm wondering how much we're saving from this policy? Are you saying how much money are the senior saving? The choices for seniors. I don't think we should be talking about saving money. And you cannot make an apple to apple comparison between the fees charged by each institution. Now, on expanding the scheme, we are already expanding the scheme. The vouchers could only be used at Hong Kong used Shenzhen Hospital. We now cover an extra seven institutions, four extra cities, and we will cover all nine mainland cities of the G B A. Healthcare vouchers are used not just in the mainland cities of the G B A, they are also used in Hong Kong. And we're not going to change this policy. Now, on midwives. Doctor Tony Ko from the Hospital Authority will take the question.
Thank you, Chair. On midwives, as you may know, midwives are trained at the Prince of Wales Hospital, and they are already general nurses. So, they shouldn't worried about being out of a job. They become midwives once they acquire the relevant experience. But as said earlier, we will gauge the service demand as well as what is happening in the private sector for midwives. They will not only help with women giving birth, they will also help with work in, say, women's health. Like I said, I don't think they should worry about being out of jobs because they can always work in other clinical areas. Thank you.
Mister Champu Ling, thank you. I want to ask about two oh five. It is about the Department of Health's work at boundary control points, the expenditure and manpower arrangement for conducting temperatures screening. And it is said in twenty twenty four at the boundary control points, there are in total four thousand two hundred odd people who were detected to have fever, but only a handful were admitted to hospitals. And there were never anyone turned away. But we are spending two hundred million dollars on this every year. While we have a more stable situation for the pandemic and we are in a tight fiscal position, will the administration consider making smaller the scale of temperature screening so that we can make use of the resources elsewhere? I'll let Doctor Ronald Lam, Director of Health, answer this question. Thank you. To prevent communicable diseases from being imported into Hong Kong, screening at boundary control points is very important for us to identify risky individuals. We are doing several things at boundary control points. The Policy bureaus have been working with the General Administration of Customs of China. We have also signed an agreement with them to have some facilitating arrangements on health inspection and quarantine. We are the South China Gateway of China, so we need to be prudent. As the member said, within this year, we did manage to identify those four thousand of those who have had fever then or who identify themselves as having symptoms. And as you may know, if you have a super contagious individual, it can be the case that many will contract a virus from that individual alone. So, we will continue to do screening at boundary control points. Not only will we screen for temperature, but we will also ask them to self-report their conditions. And for those who have been referred to the hospitals, they were not diagnosed with serious communicable diseases in the end, fortunately. But we would say screening at boundary control points is an important part of prevention and control of disease. And we talked about how at the thirteen boundary control points, we have been adopting a different approach. We have been outsourcing some of the work. We hope that through doing so, it would help save resources. We only have three boundary control points who have our own officers for the remaining ten. The services have been outsourced. We have also achieved a breakthrough. We now have a group infrared screening machine or equipment for certain individuals. That may not work. However, for example, when they are holding a baby, they will need to be screened individually. There are also some other cases that are still being developed, but that is. There are also some other cases that are still being developed, but that is. To say later. Alright, Mister Edward Leng, I want to ask about one three eight. About the reform of fee structure. Many members of the public. Had something to say. One is that civil servants can enjoy the services for free. But citizens have to pay and. When. Both are both parties are using the relevant services, only citizens are said to be abusing such services. Well, the Health Bureau said that we are trying to have. More of those used private sector services. Right now, why don't we have civil servants? Go to the private sector instead because right now they are spending, we are spending two billion dollars for civil servants. And for the public, they are just. Using one point three billion dollars. So why don't we try to get more civil servants you to use private sector services? Thus releasing resources for. The general public. Thank you, Secretary. Let me say this. Public healthcare is available for free to civil servants because it is. A benefit that comes. With being a civil servant, it is a form of employee benefit. So when you say two billion dollars, it is not exactly. Right to say that we are spending two billion dollars to acquire such services of. The H A. Well, no matter what you say, is it possible for you to release more resources? To the general public. Say. Maybe we should have them go through the voluntary healthcare insurance scheme. I think it's hard to say because this is just an assumption. We need to force certain groups of individuals go to the private sector. Thank you, Professor Chen Wen Kong. I want to ask about zero three eight and zero four six. Zero three eight is on. The Chinese Medicine Hospital. It is said in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, we have reserved. Some. Amount for the development of Chinese Medicine Hospital, eight points. Six two billion dollars. And we all want the Chinese Medicine Hospital to be commissioned as soon as possible. So I want to ask what is the latest implementation progress with the construction, with the pricing? Have you done your preparations? Now, I want to also ask questions on zero four six on organ donation. It is said that the waitlist is constantly increasing. The average waiting time is getting longer than ever. Have you considered? Enhancing awareness for people to donate their organs? Would you try to be more passionate when promoting? Organ donations such as having micro videos? Or have, in general, people share their stories to try to make people feel touched about. Organ donation and thus opt for opt in for organ donation, Secretary. I think in history, actually in different parts of the world, it is hard to achieve. High rates of organ donation. We have already an improved situation, however. And we have been adopting diverse channels to promote. Organ donation. We have been working with patient groups. As well and various stakeholders. Let me say this. We are somewhat affected. By, say, the pandemic. With. The resumption of normal operations, we have already more people who are willing to donate organs. Next, I'll let Doctor Chen Wei Leng, Director of Strategic Purchasing Office. Answer the question on Chinese Medicine Hospital. In December of this, excuse me, in. Later this year, they will have the Chinese Medicine Hospital commissioned. And we will have it in operation for four months, so there will be. Some operations to be monitored this month, I mean this year. We last reported to the Ledge Co in July. And we said we would hand over to the operator in December of this year. We have already started hiring. We have conducted a recruitment exercise in Chuanquanou. We have also set up a talent pool. We hope to hire the manpower need gradually. As for the fee structure, the Health Bureau will derive it. We are at. The later stages of deriving the structure and the board is scrutinizing it. And we will announce the fee structure in Q three or Q four of this year. I want to ask about one seven five. We talked about how. With new hospitals, we need to consider accessibility. And it is said there is. For the third medical school, it would take ten odd minutes to walk from our Tamme Station, so the commute would at least. Be half an hour. I am not happy with that. I think we should have the hospital as close to the station as possible. Should we have another station, actually? And before. The secretary said. The most critical patients would be those in ambulance and the location should be easily accessible. For ambulances. I understand what the secretary said, but I feel differently. In the past three years, thirty percent of patients were admitted by ambulances. We shouldn't give up on the seventy percent. Remaining patients and staff members' interests for the benefit of the thirty percent. Can we? Be a bit more creative, actually, since the. Hospital, I mean this. The institution is still being constructed, so we can have a proposal where the hospital is located. Close to the station and then we can have a tunnel or whatever that will connect straight to the A N E. Department. That. Should be happy for both sides. Secretary. Would you consider this suggestion? Would you fight for this with the other departments? Thank you.
Secretary, I thank the member for his concern for the location. Indeed, the location of a hospital matters. The member raised concerns about accessibility for the hospital workers. There are different transport options for you to access a place. You can take the train, some people take the taxi or the bus, other forms of public transport. But from the healthcare point of view, we care most about. Patients with urgent needs, so we have to bear the needs of ambulances in mind, so we have to look at the location. Now, on the road design, et cetera, that will be a point we have to explore with the Development Bureau. The member suggested building a footbridge or a. Underpass. Or even an express lane, so called a green lane. For people with urgent needs to access the hospital. Those are more technical questions. For engineers. And we can consider those points when we design the future hospital. I thank the secretary for the positive response. Our country has been reminding us to adopt new thinking as we approach old problems. There were fifteen bureaus, three secretaries of departments. The path, the previous problem was that each one worked in their own silo. If bureaus can make their case, then we can see a difference. The last thing I want to see is that we commit billions of dollars to a project and then we get problems left and right. Doctor Tan Yihun. One six eight. I have some follow up questions. First. The district health centers. There are consultants heading. These D H Cs, medical consultants, if they're all part timers, can we get full time doctors for D H Cs? Are there special merits with having part time medical consultants at D H Cs? Now. I have a question about financial sustainability. The budget for D H Cs will go up by forty percent. We're going from seven hundred million dollars to one billion dollars. The increase in the budget, is it for expanding the scope of services or is it for expanding, enhancing the services? Now, I also have a question about merging the elderly health centers and the women's health centers. How do we make sure there's no gap in the service as we merge these centers? Can we make sure there are healthcare professionals? Who can meet the needs of local residents? So those are my questions. Three questions for the secretary. Doctor Pang Fei Chao can take those questions. Thank you. D H Cs are meant to go hand in hand with family doctors as part of the district level healthcare services. D H Cs are there to coordinate services, so people go to D H Cs for screening. D H Cs. Can answer questions. And help people with health management in managing, say, chronic diseases. Now, the about the part time medical consultant at D H Cs. Those consultants give support to the nurses and the allied healthcare professionals. That's for quality assurance. The medical consultant. Is not there to provide services directly, but rather they are there to make sure the entire facility is running well. But we can certainly review whether this approach meets our goals in the end. Now, on the increase in the budget. There will be three extra D H Cs. And three women's healthcare centers will be moved from the Department of Health to D H Cs. So that basically the budget is down to new D H Cs and the Women Wellness Satellite. The provision will also go from the D H to the D H to to the Primary Healthcare Commission, so we have made the changes to the budget accordingly. Now, on merging the elderly health centers and women's health centers, we're trying to boost efficiency. We want to provide more value added services to women and seniors. We will make sure smooth transition. So that people can keep accessing the services they need. Thank you, Miss Chan Ho Yeon. Two oh one, it's about the COVID vaccines and two one four, po- public private. Partnership. Now, we should spend where we should and save where we can with public money. Now, we've been asking people not to waste resources. But I'm looking at the reply of two oh one. I am sad to see that. One point one eight million doses of community. Bivalent vaccines were simply discarded and they made up sixty two percent of the community vaccines purchased. You buy a hundred vaccines and you throw away sixty two such vaccines. We bought the vaccines with public money. We had to buy the vaccines during COVID because people needed the vaccines. Now, things have stabilized to twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. Way fewer people took the jabs. We spent roughly a hundred million dollars in the each of the recent years. Now, we approved fourteen point five billion dollars. We we still have five point four billion dollars left, and since we're spending. A hundred million dollars each year, so let's stop wasting public money. How are we going to make good use of the five point four billion dollars? You can buy vaccines for fifty years when you spend the same amount each year. Now, I turn to oh one four. It's about P P P. So we take the interest return to fund the operations, but now some of the money will have to go back to our public coffers. And the money for the P P Ps can only last for another five years. My question is. With this clawback, will we see a massive scale back of our P P Ps? Can we spend the money? On the vaccine, on P P Ps instead, we should be scaling up our P P Ps to support our public healthcare. Two questions for the secretary. First, a brief comment on the vaccines. Communicable diseases strike fast and they evolve quickly. As we can still recall. There was a time when everyone scrambled for the vaccines. We also have to bear in mind that people need a choice when it comes to vaccines. We now have a smaller stock of COVID vaccines. The percentage looks huge, as the man mentioned, because you start with a base, small base value. That's why the proportion of unused vaccines appears such a huge percentage. Now, on how we decide on the amount to procure in terms of vaccines, Doctor Rondo Lam will take the question. On P P Ps. The hospital authority can take that question. Now, on procurement. Now, on P P P for the H A, Doctor Tony Cole will take the question, but we first hear from Doctor Ronald Lamb about the vaccines. We procure our vaccines based on the Scientific Committee on Vaccine Preventable Diseases. We identify the high risk population groups. And then we use a model to decide how many vaccines to buy. During. And after COVID. We have seen. Constant involvement of the vi- viral strains, X B B, X J N, et cetera. We have to catch up with the evolving viral strains. On procurement, there is a protocol. Vaccine makers impose minimum procurement amount. Vaccine makers impose minimum procurement amounts because so many different parties are trying to buy vaccines from them. And that has an impact on the amount of vaccines we buy. Now over to Doctor Tony Cole. On PPPs. PPPs are a key way for us to provide services to the people. PPP goes hand in hand with primary healthcare and other parts of our healthcare system. During the COVID years, we had to look after. A large number of COVID patients. So we had to get pri- so we had to get private hospitals to help out. So now we have made changes, given that we have put COVID behind us. And for PPPs, we'll have to consider whether the private sector can give the support we need. Secretary, there was a question that has gone unanswered. And that is whether the secretary, we could see the could using some of the money for vaccines. On PPPs instead, will you give a response? Although it's money under the Health Bureau. We do distinguish between different parts of money for different purposes. So we cannot just move money from one part to another on a whim. The reply says, we destroyed one point one eight million doses of community bivalent vaccines. You could have donated the vaccines elsewhere. We bought the vaccines with public money. I want to add that those vaccines expired. You could have donated the vaccines before they expired. It's public money. Let's not waste the resources. Mister Kitson Yang. H H B one eight eight and one ninety. One eight eight. Is about an acute hospital in Wontai Xin. I'm happy with the reply, but I want to ask some follow up questions. If we can find a suitable site, we can build a new hospital to meet the need. I welcome this reply. Now, right next to Mary Knoll Hospital. And then you also have a surface reservoir that will be relocated to Lion's Rock. And you will free up the site in Diamond Hill. And under the second ten year hospital development plan. Some of the land from the surface reservoir will be used for expanding the Wontai Xin Hospital. Since we have this expansion plan, can we get a bit more land, a bit more extra land to build an acute hospital? To meet the aspirations of Wontai Xin residents? That's my first question. Now, H H B one ninety. It's about dentists. The reply says there are sixty nine vacancies. We have brought in eleven non locally trained dentists. Do we have a cap on non locally trained dentists we bring in? I was simply expecting to bring in sixty nine and that's it? Now, for the non locally trained dentist brought in, they simply perform services on pain relief for extraction. Can we also get them to do scaling and filling? These services are in keen demand after all. Now, there's also a dental program for teens. Can we expand this scheme to dental services in the mainland? The reply says these these procedures cannot be accessed in the mainland under the scheme. The mainland has a huge market. You can see ads of dental services from the mainland in Hong Kong everywhere. Since the mainland has the capacity and we do not have the capacity ourselves. So why not let Hong Kong residents use our resources to access dental services in the mainland?
Thank you on acute hospital. As you may know, we have a shortage of land. Identifying a suitable site is a challenge. But we will conduct. Studies to see if there is a suitable site. On dental services. Right now, the non locally trained dentists. Will start in this month at the D H, the H A or the relevant institutions. Once the vacancies are filled, the recruitment exercise will end. This is a mechanism that features automatic adjustment. That would make sure the needs of the public healthcare system are met without creating a surplus of manpower. When you talk about providing. Dental services, the government has emphasized preventive care as well as emergency care for. Public dental services. I'll let Doctor Ronald Lamb, Director of Health, supplement my answers. Thank you on recruiting dentists. We have a twenty one percent. Vacancy rate in the public healthcare system. For non locally trained dentists. We have received ninety applications in the global recruitment exercise. Twelve of them were deemed to qualified and we have already issued three offers and they started work. We will continue with the recruitment exercise to fill the vacancies. But on top of that, we also have various dental programs. We have the P D C C Primary Dental Co Care Pilot Scheme for Adolescents. We are working with NGOs for that. So we are not only recruiting for the public healthcare system. Because we are working with NGOs, if we have suitable candidates. This can be a platform for NGOs to select the right. Individuals to serve them. Thank you. I have a short follow up. Please consider using the land in the Diamond Hill Service Reservoir. Thank you. Ms Jovi Chan. Thank you, Chair. Due to time constraints, I want to ask about the OnePlus mechanism only. I want to ask about zero five three in particular. That is my question. We need to make sure we can get affordable and quality drugs. And we have finally seen the number of successful applications reaching double digits. And you have received three hundred and ninety three inquiries eh. From one hundred odd institutions. But there is a gap between this and your aspirations, it seems. Why is that? How can we also convert those who have made inquiries to those who would actually make applications? It is said before the government should be more proactive and you seem to have taken the suggestion. Later this year, you would provide pre application consultation services for pharmaceutical companies. For them to get more information on the application process. And you said you would have a performance pledge of serving the relevant companies within one hundred and fifty working days. With this, we should be able to lower the cost for drugs. But then we would also have some costs incurred in terms of manpower. Would you consider charging consultation fees from pharmaceutical companies? I actually participated in a cancer related event in March. And I heard similar feedback from patients, so I think we can go in this direction. For different implications or. Some complications or disorders. I think we should have more drugs than cater to these disorders. So would you consider expanding the scope of the relevant mechanism? Thank you. Secretary. We need to definitely take into consideration the quality and safety of the drugs. We need to play a gatekeeper role. There are various new drugs. And we need to make sure there are no serious adverse effects of drugs. I will now let Doctor Ronald Lamb of Director of Health. Supplement my answers. I think the gap is only due to the lack of such information being updated. We have now dealt with eleven drugs under the OnePlus mechanism. There are drugs for cancer and blood related or hematological diseases. And we will try to. Meet our performance as best as possible to serve. The relevant companies within one hundred and fifty working days. For new drugs, ninety nine percent of them can be dealt with within five months. We will continue to work with representatives of the pharmaceutical companies. Starting from thirty first of March, we are. Having consultation meetings with those who are very interested in taking part in the OnePlus mechanism. So that they know how the process works. We will soon go into the second stage where we would. Provide more tailor made. Services and answers to these companies so that they can potentially expedite the process. Mister Edmund Wong, I want to ask about one one six. That is about a pilot scheme. The pilot scheme will end at on thirty first of March next year. The pilot scheme for supporting patients of the hospital authority in the G B A. I want to ask if you expand this scheme to other grade three A hospitals in the G B A. To alleviate the burden on public healthcare system. I also want to ask about one four six. On the cross boundary ambulance services. It is said that ten cases were received. And seven of them came from the University of Hong Kong Shenzhen Hospital. And three of them came from Macau. I want to ask more about the patient's conditions. The H Z M B is a good infrastructure and many people now. Stay in Zhuhai. For the long term. How can we better? Facilitate them. To get healthcare services if needed. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you. Well, we have provided such services for those who need follow up treatment. During the pandemic, we leave the option open still. Because there are those who may need such services after the pandemic. This is different from healthcare vouchers because the healthcare vouchers would have an option. If people have an appointment in Hong Kong. Then we would let them. Go with. The. Scheme that is the pilot scheme for hospital authority patients to seek follow up. Treatment in the G B A. It's just that those who already are getting such services. At the University of Hong Kong Shenzhen Hospital can continue to get such services. We will not have new pilot points. For cross boundary ambulance services, they are not for emergency patients. The services only provide point to point conveyance from a hospital in the G B A. To hospital in Hong Kong. We need to make sure the patient's condition is stable enough during the conveyance. But the. The vehicle transporting the patient will not be a coach. So to speak. Ambulance is an expensive transport. It is not an option for business travel. So the condition has to be serious enough. But then the condition should also not be serious enough. That it would be unsafe to transport the patient. So we have three patients from Macau and seven patients from the mainland. That needed conveyance. Of the cross boundary ambulance services. This service commenced operations on first of November, so it has since been five months. We are still reviewing the services. We will consider promulgating such services in Zhuhai, for example. Mister Edmund Wong wanted to you to provide some information about the patients. Can you do that? Well, as long as it's not personal data, if it's general figures, we should be able to provide such. Thank you. We can provide that after the meeting. Thank you. I have a short follow up. I hope that the services will not be abused. We need to make sure these services are actually needed by the individuals. Ms Yong Ho-yen, I want to ask about Mister Shiu Kafai's question two six four. On screening at boundary control points. The cost. Is. As set out in the list. There are in total seven twenty, seven hundred and twenty two people. And it costs two hundred and five million dollars. We can see after the pandemic in twenty twenty three, twenty four. We do not have that many individuals identified to have fever. We have four thousand two hundred and fourteen individuals last year. But not a lot of them are actually referred to hospitals in twenty twenty four. It's just in the single digit for the whole year. Do we need to review the establishment? Do we need that many people to conduct screening? I know that you may have a workflow at play. But can we streamline the workflows with technology? To save costs? Secretary, I'll let Doctor Ronald Lamb answer this question again. Thank you, Doctor Lamb, please. Thank you. We have continuously reviewed the manpower at boundary control points. Compared to the pandemic, it the figure has already decreased a lot. We have also adopted some new technologies, group infrared screening, for example. We have also made use of a technology that would allow screening to take place in lanes. But I would say this for boundary control points and the airport. It is important to make sure there is health screening. Because we don't want. Serious communicable diseases or viruses. To be imported into Hong Kong. As you may remember, we had some super spreaders. That. Transmitted the disease. And infected many individuals. And last year, we identified four thousand odd people who had. A fever or reported themselves to be unwell. Fortunately, upon preliminary screening and upon referral to hospitals. Fortunately, they were not diagnosed with serious diseases. But in accordance with the agreement we signed. With the mainland authorities, we need to maintain the relevant arrangements. And for the thirteen boundary control points, ten of them have the services outsourced. So you don't have to. So you don't have to worry about the cost. We have been trying to compress the cost. I think you can try to think about making use of technologies such as A I to save manpower. You do not need all seven hundred and twenty two people every day to make sure you're practicing disease prevention. I think you can take a more targeted approach to identify the high risk individuals. You really need to think about how to save manpower.
I'm sorry, my time is up. So, huh. Next, Miss Lillian Kwok. Oh, seven, six. First, I commend the government for the detailed reply. Now I'm looking at the figures about A S D and A D H D. For minors, eighteen thousand such people. Once you go above eighteen, A S D, six thousand nine hundred, A D H D down to five thousand. Is it because these people are no longer at schools? How do you follow up on such cases? Why is this plunging the figures? Now, my next question is, within the same reply, the figures are staggering. Two hundred and seventy thousand. Anxiety, depression, sixty percent. Now, there's a pilot scheme for D H C's. Tier two covers counselling. That is making a difference. But I'm looking at the manpower. It's mostly educational psychologists or medical social workers. But I don't see much about counselling available. Overseas counselors play a bigger role. So can we make changes to how we use resources so that you can have all three tiers in hospitals? So those are my questions. Secretary. Now on services for psychiatric patients, Doctor Tony Cole will take the question.
Thank you. The member asked about this point. About more minors having A S D or A D H D, it's common. From what we understand, these conditions tend to stabilize when an adolescent becomes an adult. So you see fewer adult cases for such conditions. Now on common mental disorders. The hospital authority has cross disciplinary teams. We have officers from different grades to help these people. Care for these patients takes more than just psychiatrists or specialist outpatient clinics. Looking after people with mental health needs requires a community wide effort. That's why we are promoting mental health education. So we have used different channels and we're looking at different options such as family doctors, G O P Cs, and also private doctors. So we need specialist care and also primary healthcare to go hand in hand. Any follow up? I do have a follow up question. Professionals want to help. Now, since we have that three tier support structure, can we also revisit this tiered system? Can we also look at the hospital authority's structure? So that people with mental health struggles don't have to turn to drugs as a first resort? Doctor Tony Cole, any follow up?
No. Mister Ma Feng Kwok. Thank you, Chairman. Two, seven, two. It's about expanding the pilot scheme or using E C H, E C H C V in the Greater Bay Area. Of course, it's good to see that more mainland institutions are accepting such healthcare vouchers for seniors. Seniors go to Hong Kong U Shenzhen Hospital for health checks or surgeries. The feedback is that it's cheaper in the Shenzhen. The wait is shorter, way shorter in Shenzhen than in Hong Kong. So for the nine medical institutions that accept our healthcare vouchers, are there no restrictions on what people can use the vouchers on such as oral health, health checks, acute conditions? So no restrictions, is that the case? Now, another question is, within this year, will the grade three A hospitals in the G B A also accept our healthcare vouchers? And what will the acceptance of the healthcare vouchers by those mainland institutions mean for our public healthcare system? Will that take pressure off our public healthcare system? Secretary. I thank Mister Ma for his questions. Our elderly healthcare vouchers are for our above sixty fives. These seniors can access Hong Kong's private healthcare institutions for specified services. There are restrictions on what services people can use. It's not carte blanche. The point is to encourage seniors to access primary healthcare. So that means health checkups and also outpatient care. So the scope covers outpatient care, physiotherapy, occupational therapy, dental care, Chinese medicine. But the vouchers will not cover inpatient care or purely for purchasing medical supplies. So to answer the question, yes, there are restrictions on what people can spend the vouchers on. And when the vouchers are used in the mainland, the same restrictions apply in the mainland as they do in Hong Kong. It's simply for seniors to choose an institution and that can be something in the mainland. Now on expanding the scheme. Now, we started a pilot scheme on expanding this E H C V. We added seven extra institutions in Zhongshan, Dongguan, Shenzhen, and also Nansha. The policy addressed last year also proposed a further expansion. Our goal is to cover all the nine mainland cities of the Greater Bay Area. But we want to stress that we're giving seniors a choice. The seniors get to choose where to spend the two thousand five hundred dollars within the scheme. Next, Mister Kenneth Fork.
Mister Ma Feng Kwok. My question is, does the scheme help take pressure off our public healthcare system? Are we saving money? This is about primary healthcare. It's about preventive care. We're simply saying that seniors can now spend the money they would have be, be spending in Hong Kong in the mainland. So we're not really comparing things. Mister Kenneth Fork.
Thank you, Chairman. Two, three, seven. A question from Miss Nixie Lam. Miss Yunus Young and Mister Champu Leng also asked about the same thing. Now, it's about the port health screening. We spent a large sum. It's more than one point one billion dollars over five years. I heard the government's reply. I accept that, but let's make greater use of technology. I do have a question about taking the temperature of people in a car. You put people there for healthcare, for temperature screening. The workers working there put their own health at risk because of all the exhaust film from the cars. Now, I go to the mainland a lot. I can see the outsourced workers there. They put on uniform. We're spending the money anyway. The reply I got was that we will keep the arrangement as it is. It's important, so we keep it. So I wonder if we can make sure that we can do, we can truly screen out people with healthcare issues. I think the work is being done in a sloppy way. Say you have seven people on board a car and the worker there does a sloppy job. They just let the car through after making a perfunctory effort. So are we indeed meeting our goal of doing temperature screening? We're spending the money. How do we make sure the contractor is truly delivering work that is up to scratch? I don't need a response. This point has been raised by two members already. Now, I turn to another question. One, one, four from Professor Priscilla Lo. It's about mental health. One, one, four, four. More and more young people are getting mental health problems in twenty twenty four. There was a training for members of care teams, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, not exactly a huge sum. Mental health requires specialist services. So given the money spent, what kind of services were provided? How many people were contacted? So have we assessed what difference that training made? So this is about mental health training. Secretary.
As we have been stressing, mental health problems are not entirely or purely medical nature. Those issues also have to do with someone's school, someone's job, someone's life. When someone's condition worsens to the point they need healthcare and we're only looking at the problem as a medical problem, that's only part of the picture. So we want to give greater support at the community level. That's why we want to train care team members so that these care team members can pick up the basic skills when they come across people who may have mental health needs. Care team members may come into contact with seniors or whatever people care teams serve. I don't have the data at hand showing exactly when those care team members applied the skills they picked up. Next, Doctor So Chuanwing. I thank the government and Professor Lo for their tireless work in healthcare and the great results they have achieved. Now, I want to follow up on H H B one, six, five. The reply says for the second hospital development plan. The planning horizon will be up to twenty forty. Our demographic structure is changing. The public healthcare system is also going through a change. Having a horizon of more than fifteen years shows foresight. So for the second H D P, will we take into account the growing share of seniors in the community? With the talent admission schemes, we also have fresh population. Have we taken into account this factor in our plan? The government is also fostering public and private healthcare collaboration. So I wonder, do we have a clear picture of how much diversion is happening so that we can plan for the second H D P accordingly? Now I turn to H H B one, six, four. This is the chronic disease cold care scheme. The scheme has been well received. A hundred and ten thousand people signed up for the scheme. The government also pledged to review and enhance this scheme. In the first quarter of last year, a local university was commissioned to do a study and assess the success of the scheme. My question is, when can that university show us the findings? Will other diseases also be covered by this chronic disease cold care scheme? So that we can keep easing or taking pressure off our public healthcare system?
Thank you, Secretary. Thank you for the second hospital development plan. We did consult the council on our then proposals, but we have seen great changes since, especially in demographics. We have a lower fertility rate. We also have various talent admission schemes. We also have the development of the northern metropolis. The landscape is significantly different from what it was back then for the first hospital development plan. So we will definitely have reference to the latest demographic projections when we formulate our plan. We need to make sure we have the latest data before we formulate the plan. The previous projections did not consider the fact that we will have primary healthcare as well. Once we have more accurate data, we will formulate the second hospital development plan. As for the C D C C pilot scheme, whether we will expand it, I will let Doctor Pang the Commissioner for Primary Healthcare answer this question. The report will be published in Q four of this year and we should have a comprehensive plan to be announced to the public then. When the pilot scheme started, we have since then had some developments. We have expanded the scope of screening. Again, we may revise the scope in due course and we will make announcements. Then, as for what we are doing for the scheme, we will also make sure to review the quality of services provided to make sure we are alleviating the burden on the public healthcare system. Thank you, Doctor David Lam. Thank you. I want to ask about zero nine eight. On hospital authority costs for some general surgeries and procedures. I didn't get any answers. But from twenty fourteen before, we have only forty one odd billion dollars in cost. Now it is over one hundred billion dollars. If you have such a significant increase in cost for the public or let's call members, either way, we need to know why there is a difference in cost. Say for the extraction of a gallbladder or for a cardiac surgery, whether there is a significant difference in cost. When we buy something, we would look at the specifications, but it seems that such details are not provided by the hospital authority. It's not trying to draw a comparison with the private sector. It's just to facilitate public knowledge on the cost. I also want to ask about one oh four. It is a technical question. I asked about healthcare manpower. I asked about healthcare manpower and the number of those who are newly registered and how many of those who are non-locally trained. In twenty twenty-two for Chinese medicine practitioners, we have one hundred and five who are locally trained. For one hundred eighty-one non-locally trained. And we have seen a similar situation in later years. But I understand that there are only eighty-four places. In Hong Kong for Chinese medicine studies. So why do we have more people who are locally trained? In some of the years, thank you. Secretary, we do not have the relevant figures for the costs of common treatments. But. For non-local residents making use of such services. We do have some cost figures. But it is not like extraction of gallbladder or the total admission costs. They would vary. The fee structure reform will also. Take into consideration the costs of some private sector patients as well as non-local resident patients. So there may be changes. For what Doctor David Lam said, for treatment for cardiac disease patients, whether the cost has changed. And I would say that is true because now some of the illnesses can be treated. I'm sure you understand. The hospital authority is constructing a chest pain center for those who are suffering cardiac arrest. If they can get to an institution early on and there is a green channel for. A quick treatment to be provided to these cardiac arrest patients. It would be ideal. So I think it is what's something that the A E D should be able to do. Healthcare manpower. I'll let the Commissioner for Chinese Medicine Development answer the question for Chinese medicine practitioners. We have indeed some of those who have studied in the mainland, but they are Hong Kong residents and thus took the exam in Hong Kong. I'll let the Commissioner for Chinese Medicine Development answer that question. So why is it that the figure is higher than eighty-four, the number of places available for Chinese medicine studies in Hong Kong? Sometimes institutions are. Able to admit more students than the designated number of places. In twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we had one hundred and four students. So it is higher than eighty-four. That is why the figure may be higher. And the Chinese University of Hong Kong offers a master's degree in Chinese medicine. It is not U G C funded. Their graduates will also take the exam, which is why we may have a higher figure of locally trained C M Ps. Doctor Dennis Lam, uh, his microphone is not on, please turn on his microphone. Please speak now, testing, testing, excuse me. I didn't know that my microphone wasn't on. I want to ask about zero nine for a question asked by myself. I'm glad to hear that the government has made progress in admitting non-locally trained medical practitioners. We have admitted one hundred and six practitioners and twenty-three of them are specialists. But according to the twenty twenty-three healthcare manpower projections, we would have a shortage of one thousand five hundred and seventy. So with those under admitted under special registration. We have only one hundred and six we are in twenty twenty-five. And we will have a shortage of one thousand five hundred seventy in twenty thirty, that will be significant. And we had in February, Hong Kong Children's Hospital suspending its services due to insufficient manpower. So it shows that manpower shortage can impact services. We have seen an increase in the number of student places for medical schools. And we are preparing for a third medical school. But then it will take time to train the medical practitioners. Would the government have any plans to, in the short term? Make sure we have a high in, a significant increase in the number of medical practitioners, especially specialists? Thank you, Secretary. Medical training is very special. So from. When one is admitted to medical school to when they actually become a medical practitioner, it would take thirteen years. The government has done much in trying to increase the number of medical practitioners in Hong Kong. Starting from two thousand and nine and twenty-ten, we have seen. The number of student places increased from three hundred and twenty to six hundred and fifty. So apart from admitting non-locally trained medical practitioners, we will continue to increase the number of student places. For medical programs. Admission of non-locally trained medical practitioners is one way though. And I think we do see a small balling effect with some non-locally trained medical practitioners working here. There would be more who are interested and they would be able to get more information from those who are already working in Hong Kong. We have different pathways. We have limited registration as well as special registration. We have threefold more people in limited registration compared to the special registration. Specialists are indeed in shortage. But I would say this. I think we do not have a general shortage of specialists. It's more about a. An improper allocation or distribution. So we want to make sure we can have a proper allocation in future. Mister Shanghai Long, you would be last to speak. I want to ask about zero six zero and zero five seven. I want to follow up on what various members asked, such as Doctor David Lam and Doctor Dennis Lam. I understand that in recent years, we have been trying hard to recruit. And in zero six zero. In the reply, it said that only ten people from the mainland. And Macau and Taiwan were admitted under special registration. If we are talking about only ten of them, do you have a breakdown? How many of them are from the mainland? How many of them are from Macau? How many of them are from Taiwan? And it's just one seventh out of those who are admitted under special registration. We have mainly mainland institutions that can produce qualified candidates. I don't think we have. We have lesser education in the mainland compared to the UK. But the UK has a sevenfold more applicants and successful candidates compared to mainland candidates. Next, I would like to first declare I am the founding chairman of the Talent, Top Talent Services Association. And we have over talents under the T T P S who have obtained PhD qualifications. Some of them have obtained a qualification from Peking University, a PhD. Qualification from Peking University. And they can't practice in Hong Kong, instead they can only open a cafe. It is regrettable. So can we have some way to allow them to practice? I also want to ask about zero five seven. From twenty eleven to twenty twenty-four, we spent three point five billion dollars. On two thousand two hundred odd projects. Twenty-seven of them government projects, nine hundred of them for postgraduate scholarship programs or projects. Right now, we are actively seeking to reform the healthcare system to improve the quality of services of the public healthcare system. So can we use the three point five billion dollars on to successful projects? And what are your success experiences? Thank you.
来香港 Secretary. On non-locally trained doctors, there's a myth, people look at just the special registration. Limited registration is also a pathway. And there are more doctors who came in through limited registration. Now, on a breakdown for doctors from the mainland, Macau or Taiwan, I don't have the figures at hand. Now, on why we get way more doctors from the UK than from the mainland? The reason is simple. More Hong Kong students did their medical school in the UK. Some of them may have have moved, may have gone to the UK during secondary school. So they went on to pursue medical studies there. We have fewer such students pursuing medical studies in the mainland, that's why. And we're also seeing fewer specialists coming in. Because specialists tend to put down roots where they get their specialist qualifications. And it's hard to secure those specialists and get them to come here instead. So we have greater success with younger doctors instead. Now, the member mentioned people with a PhD in medicine. PhD is a research degree. And that's entirely different from clinical training. A PhD does not give you an advantage in clinical practice. When we recruit doctors, we first consider the clinical capability of a person, whether they have clinical training, for example. So number fifty-seven, would there be a brief reply? Permanent Secretary. Now, on the H M R F. Health and Medical Research Fund. There has been application of the research under this fund. The results are on the website and we can also share the details with the member after the meeting. I just want to add one thing. Let's take sewage testing. That was funded by the H M R F and that was research applied to real life. Chairman, one comment from me. I brought up a case of someone with a PhD in medicine. This person has a PhD in clinical practice, he used to, the user practice in the mainland. Now, that concludes the session here and the next session will start at five P M. Thank you.